We're ready.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 22nd, 2023 regular meeting of Hamilton City Council here in 345 High Street in Hamilton. I apologize to all of you for being late. Okay, we do have two public hearings this evening. One is on CDBG and home funds, as well as a public hearing on the Vinyl Max expansion. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear. Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Knab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Mohler.
Present.
We have the quorum.
Great. I'll accept the motion to excuse Councilmember Fear for reasons known to the City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember, I guess it was Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. She is excused. We're going to start offering a prayer by Councilmember Joel Lauer for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand ovation.
Dear God, thank you for giving our community the strength to continue our period of resurgence. Thank you for blessing us with a persistent staff that offers services and works hard to continue to work for the needs of our citizens. And last, thank you for all of our citizens who continue to embrace our progress while supporting the growth in our great city.
May I?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We now go to special presentations.
Mayor.
Please.
The special presentation for tonight for the seats program, that's actually been requested to be pulled until a later meeting.
Okay, so we have no special presentations, not tonight, but we do have special people here tonight. And that brings us to one of the agenda items, Agenda Item Number 25, I think we're going to directly.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. All right, so if you would read Agenda Item Number 25 into the record, please.
Mayor, before I do that, could I have a motion?
Yeah, that's true.
That the agenda be amended by moving Agenda Item 25 to this section of the meeting.
All right. I'll accept the motion that remove Agenda Item 25 up to that part of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Knab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Is that a roll call vote or a voice vote?
Voice vote.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Now would you please read Agenda Item Number 25 into the record?
I need one more motion, Mayor.
Let's add just one more motion then.
A motion that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of Agenda Item Number 25 prior to it's being considered at this meeting.
That's what I was going to say. There's a motion. Is there a motion made by Councilmember Pullman?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Is that a roll call or a voice?
Voice vote.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. I think I did hear a voice vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, it's the third time. Is it okay now to read Agenda Item Number 25 into the record?
A resolution recognizing the establishment of the City of Hamilton's 17 neighborhoods.
Okay. Is there a?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
I make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Which Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Knab. So, Agenda Item Number 17. Councilmember Fear is an individual who really worked on getting this to be a resolution so it becomes part of our recorded history of resolutions. And all of us are involved with 17 Strong. I think Councilmember Vaughn is probably one of the key folks from council who's involved with 17 Strong. You want to kind of present this a little bit as to what we're doing here?
Sure. 17 Strong was started as an initiative several years ago. We have 17 wonderful neighborhoods in the City of Hamilton. And although they're recognized frequently in many different ways, never officially have we recognized all 17 of our neighborhoods. And I'm not going to read the description of each neighborhood, but I will tell you that each neighborhood is extremely unique. If by chance, and I see we have a lot of students here today, if by chance you don't know the neighborhood you live in, I would ask that you research it and see, where is my neighborhood? What am I? Because anymore, we refer to our neighborhoods as I live in the Washington neighborhood, or I live in the Highland neighborhood. Some of our neighborhoods have names, but it isn't necessarily the only part of that neighborhood. So I would highly suggest that you get to know your neighborhood. We have neighborhood meetings that are held in most neighborhoods once a month, where everyone comes together to talk about how engaged are we? How can we enhance the community? What can I do to make a difference? We hope everyone's making a difference in Hamilton in one way or the other. But in your neighborhood, this is where you live. It's what you care about the most. Who are your neighbors? If you don't know your neighbors, get to know your neighbors. If there are issues in your community, who steps up? I see a few folks here that I know are at 17 Strong neighborhood meetings because they truly care about their neighborhood. And when we're all engaged, and 17 Strong talks about we is greater than me, but when we're all engaged, it makes a bigger difference in our communities. So I'm just going to read the names of each of the communities, and then I would ask that each of you go back, figure out, where do I live? In what neighborhood? So we have the German Village Urban Neighborhood, Dayton Lane, which is also an urban, meaning they're closer to town. We have Rossville Urban Neighborhood, Riverview, which is also urban, East End, which we call a traditional neighborhood, one of our older communities. Prospect Hill is traditional. Highland Park is what we call a traditional neighborhood. Lindenwald, traditional. Armendale, traditional neighborhood. Jefferson, traditional. North End, traditional. And let me flip over. Half Place Governor's Hill is a suburban neighborhood. Washington, suburban. Milliken is a suburban neighborhood as well. And the last two, New London is suburban. And Enterprise Park, one that you may not think a lot about, which is kind of on the outskirts, but also a suburban neighborhood, but a lot of our industry. 80 Acres, some of the others, Seika, is out in that area. So those are more areas of development, not necessarily residential. But I think we should all be very proud of our 17 neighborhoods. The city certainly recognizes our 17 neighborhoods, but tonight we officially have a resolution in support of all of those neighborhoods. So I challenge each and every one of you to get involved and become part of it. I know, I think we have a couple of students who are now part of the youth component of 17 Strong, and that's the next generation that's going to keep our neighborhoods growing and engaging and making Hamilton stronger because of it. So, thank you, Mayor.
And I just want to read part of the staff report. Hamilton City Council is interested in assisting the city's 17 Strong neighborhoods, raising awareness as well as knowledge of the history of our city's neighborhoods. Council will be led by neighborhood leaders, which this is a neighborhood initiative. This is not a council initiative as much as it is showing neighborhoods. And the city's Department of Neighborhoods is so involved in the success of this 17 Strong neighborhood program. Council will be liaisons to the citizens at the neighborhood meetings. A little bit of information more about 17 Strong, the initiative itself, was recently awarded the Citizen Participation Award from the Ohio City County Management Association, 2018. The International Economic Development Council honored the City of Hamilton for its neighborhood development. Civil award. 17 Strong Neighborhoods Initiative grant program has provided over $250,000 to projects throughout the community since 2016. So it's an amazing group, 17 Strong is, but the framework is our 17 neighborhoods, which we do recognize by resolution this evening. Anybody else on council wish to say anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Two weeks ago, at our council meeting, we introduced this year's gatherings on Saturday mornings. Our first gathering, Coffee with Council, as we call it, is this coming Saturday from 10 until 11 o'clock at the Virginia Street Park in Highland Park. Again, it brings community, it brings neighbors together to be able to have discussions. So any of you who would like to come to the Virginia Street Park and join us Saturday morning, just for a very informal conversation, you're more than welcome to do so. That was a published document. It's going out in all of the utility bills. So you'll have a record of the monthly conversation times, Saturday mornings, where they will move to in those 17 neighborhoods around the city. There are eight of them this coming summer, starting this Saturday, all the way out through October, I believe. So please feel welcome to join us and have a conversation with your neighbors and friends. A lot of commonalities, a lot of distinct things that take place in neighborhoods, as Susan and the mayor shared, but importantly, this is your city. These are citizen action groups. They're kind of liaison with council members and things, as we shared, but importantly, you're all invited to come to those, have conversations, take them back to your neighborhoods, and help expand upon them. Thank you.
Anybody else on council?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So if anyone was counting, I only named 16 of the 17, and I apologize. Our central business district, where we have many residents that are living, is also one of our urban neighborhoods. And so our businesses and our residents here. So that's number 17.
Okay. If there is no one else on council, how many of you out there have been to a 17 Strong meeting or event, or benefited from a microgram? Sure. Quite a few of you folks maybe have, but we invite you to come to the Coffee with Council. Come to the 17 Strong meetings that are sometimes held monthly, sometimes every other month. So, all right, ready for a roll call vote?
Yes, sir.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
Okay. Now go back to the audience of citizens, but as I saw in the book when I got here, no one signed up for audience of citizens. You just kind of have to have some rules, Jim. So I want you to, I want you to talk to us after the meeting, or come to the next meeting with your idea, or feel free to call me sometime between now and the next meeting. Okay? All right, let's go to the consent agenda. That's all staff reports, caucus reports, as well as our financial report for February 2023, and our investment report for 2023. During this time, we go into our committee of the whole, which allows council to ask questions about items, provide direction, or make comments on reports. Is there a motion for the regular meeting be recessed? The committee of the whole take place?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Knab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. And we go into committee of the whole at 6:16. Call agenda, please.
Yes, sir. So our first two items tonight will be presented by our planning director, Liz Hayden.
Okay. Mr. City Clerk, can you do us a favor and see what's trying to print, or is not printing over there, or kick it, or something like that?
Then we got a hammer.
It's cleaning.
What's cleaning? We have a self-cleaned printer. Okay.
And I can call her for all this.
Turn it off and turn it back on. Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. Two easy ones, hopefully, tonight. The first is a proposed rezoning of the property outlined in red, and the reasoning is, is that there's a proposed development that crosses over two properties. It's the proposed firehouse, and they have two different zoning, so it makes sense for the whole park property to have one zoning. You have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
And then this is a proposed alley vacation shown in red. It is near Park and north B by Inlows, and it was part, the alley vacation was part of an agreement that we have with Inlows when we did infrastructure improvements on North B Street, and this is the final cleanup process in that project. Any questions on this one?
Any questions at all? Thank you. Number three?
Yes, sir. Agenda item number three will be presented by our law director, Ms. Letitia Block.
Good evening, Mayor Mohler, members of city council, citizens of Hamilton. I am here to present on a proposed resolution related to train derailment. The National League of Cities, in which we follow closely, has proposed to urge council to make some changes related to rail safety. And also, the Ohio Municipal League has also encouraged Ohio cities to propose resolutions to urge the federal government and the state government to make some changes to protect citizens from the inherent dangers of derailment. In your council packet, there is a list of those recommendations. Those include additional data related to hazardous materials, making sure that the fines that the train companies are assessed are going back to the communities that are most impacted, and overall general data improvement in terms of what is being transported on trains and regulation related to those things. So in the packet are those recommendations. There is also a copy of the draft bill. That is the Senate Bill, Railway Safety Act of 2023, and the highlights of that. And so if it is the will of council at the next council meeting, there will be a proposed resolution on that issue, and that draft resolution is in the packet. Any questions?
Any questions? Any comments about that? Thank you, Liz. I know all of council read over the summary of the legislation that's been proposed by Senators Brown and Vance, and I think there's three or four others. And it's a lot of common sense bipartisan. I know Vice Mayor Ryan's been actively involved with railway issues and all, but it's like advanced notification of hazardous material with a gas discharge plan, reduce, eliminate blocked crossings, train length and weight restrictions, speed restrictions, track standards, inspections, reports to the public, defect detectors, minimum crew size, safer tank cars, training for first responders, research and development. And if anybody looks at that list, it just makes a lot of common sense that if this comes into play, hopefully there will be less and less derailments and issues. And that's going to be up for a vote, I guess, at our next council meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But that is, it's only like a 13-page summary, and anybody's interested in safer community, I think, would be wise to look into that legislation. But that's what's going, hopefully, through Congress. So if there are comments on that, then also I did send a letter to, I sent that to the Mayor of Fairfield, Mayor of Middletown, and a city council member in New Miami, because we as a group need to, I think, make our voices heard in Columbus, as well as in Washington, DC. Is there a motion the committee of the whole be closed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. 6:22. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear. She was not here. Pardon me. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Okay. The regular meeting is reconvened at 6:22. I'll accept the motion regarding the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion, now with the exception of the items so noted. Council received the reports of the consent agenda and concurred to their recommendations.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Okay, we now go to the public hearing section of our agenda. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed, and the following public hearings take place.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Knab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go into the public hearing section of this agenda. Would you please read into the record the public hearing, this is number four on the agenda.
A public hearing regarding the City of Hamilton's annual action plan update for fiscal year 2023 through 2024, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant CDBG and home investment partnership program funds.
Okay. And when the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing involving use of community development block grant funds, as well as home investment partnership program funds. When the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing involving the investment of CDBG and home funds. Okay? I look at the book, the public sign-in book for that public hearing, and no one did sign the book for this public hearing. Okay, anyone on council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. The public hearing is closed at 6:24. We now go to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the second public hearing this evening.
A public hearing regarding a major planned development departure amendment for Vinyl Max 2921 McBride Court pertaining to a proposed 150,000 square foot building addition as the Vinyl Max expansion, and two variance requests to the zoning ordinance.
And when the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing involving this expansion at Vinyl Max, when the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing, if you want to please come to the podium and give us your name, and tell us about what's on your mind about this.
Rob Painter, RVP Engineering 6236, Center Park Drive, Westchester, Ohio 45069. I'm the civil engineer for the proposed expansion. I'm here with a member of Al Meyer, and also with Vinyl Max. We're just here to answer your questions, if you have any. That's it.
Senator on Planning Commission, I appreciate the very much in-depth, detailed explanation that you gave about this expansion. I think it's great when a company grows in our city. When the parking lots get larger, that means that you're going to have more people working there, and just thank you for your continued investment in the city. Any questions for our representatives involving Agenda Item Number Five and the Vinyl Max expansion?
Right, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wishes to be heard at this public hearing involving the expansion at Vinyl Max? Okay, looking at the book, nobody signed the public speaking book for this public hearing. Anyone on council wish to make a comment or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Ryan, seconded by Councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:26. I'll accept the motion to regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor, excuse me, motion made by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Okay, we go to regular meeting at 6:27. We now go into council actions pertaining to legislative items. Council actions pertaining to legislative items. I'll accept the motion regarding this particular section of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Knab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to pending legislation, Agenda Item Number Six, second reading of emergency ordinance involving a temporary easement, Tyler'sville Road.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a temporary easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 3150 Tyler'sville Road, Mark R. and Christie M. Schwabach, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knab.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Knab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion about this particular emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
Okay, we go to Agenda Item Number Seven, second reading of an ordinance involving vacating a portion of South 7th Street.
An ordinance vacating a portion of South 7th Street located between Walnut Street and Hanover Street, 4th Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio. City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion about this particular ordinance? Okay, roll call vote?
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
Go to Agenda Item Number Eight, second reading of an ordinance involving vacating a portion of St. Clair Avenue.
An ordinance vacating a portion of St. Clair Avenue located between Bedford Avenue and Riverd Road, 6th Ward, City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio. City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Knab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Knab, seconded by Councilmember Pullman. Any discussion on this particular ordinance? Roll call vote?
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 6-0.
We go to new legislation, first reading of an ordinance involving our CDBG and home funds.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's annual action plan update for the fiscal year 2023 through 2024, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant CDBG and home investment partnership program funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. For the record, those are federal funds that do come back to us for various items in the city. Agenda Item Number 10, first reading of an ordinance involving the Vinyl Max expansion.
An ordinance approving a major planned development departure amendment for Vinyl Max 2921 McBride Court pertaining to a proposed 150,000 square foot building addition as the Vinyl Max expansion, and two variance requests of the Hamilton zoning ordinance. RVP Engineering applicant, TLP 2921 McBride LLC owner, first reading.
Thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number 11, first reading of an ordinance involving the classification of payroll administrator.
An ordinance in supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2022-12-126, adopted December 14, 2022, by adding the new classification of payroll administrator, first reading.
Agenda Item Number 12, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving the permanent utility easement, Tyler'sville Road.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a permanent utility easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 3190 Tyler'sville Road, Tanya L. Mull, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Go to Agenda Item Number 13, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving a temporary easement, Tyler'sville Road.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a temporary easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 2981 Tyler'sville Road, Jacob and Brooke M. Masters, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number 14, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving a purchase of a standard highway easement, North Gilmore Road.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a standard highway easement located between, excuse me, located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 7590 North Gilmore Road, Frederick D. and Sherry Hogan, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
For the record, these easements are important for roadway improvements. We go to Agenda Item Number 15, resolution involving Western Avenue and our side lot program.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 448, 514, and 518 South Front Street, and 1301 Western Avenue.
Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments on this one from council? Hearing none, roll call, please. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We go to agenda item number 16. Resolution involving our side lot program, Parkmo Avenue.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 1419 Parkmo Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this particular resolution? Roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We go to agenda item number 17. It's a resolution also involving our side lot program, North 10th Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 340 North 10th Street.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion or comment on this side lot program resolution? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Okay, we go to agenda item number 18. Resolution involving HUGS program in 925 Vine Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to the Hamilton Urban Garden Systems, HUGS, for the purpose of a community garden, 925 Vine Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Nab. Discussion or comments? Just want to thank Michelle Merritt. She runs this Hamilton Urban Garden System. And she's got a location on Front Street. And this is going to be a location, I guess, on Vine Street. And where you might see what could be a possible food desert or a place that could be used for growing of various fruits and vegetables. She's leading that and she's a real leader in our community in that area. Any other comments? Roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Good to agenda item number 19, which is a resolution involving the ARPA First Responder Wellness Recruitment Retention and Resiliency Grant.
A resolution ratifying the application for the Ohio Emergency Management Agency's ARPA First Responder Wellness Recruitment Retention and Resiliency Grant, number AFRR-390-HIR, ratifying the execution of the grant agreement and any related documents by the city manager, city fire chief, or appropriate city staff in approving all actions related to the acceptance, distribution, and use of said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Good to agenda item number 20. Also a resolution involving the ARPA First Responder Wellness Recruitment Retention and Resiliency Grant.
A resolution ratifying the application for the Ohio Emergency Management Agency's ARPA First Responder Wellness Recruitment Retention and Resiliency Grant, number AFRR-390-WELL, ratifying the execution of the grant agreement and any related documents by the city manager, city fire chief, or appropriate city staff and ratifying and approving all actions related to the acceptance and distribution, acceptance, distribution, and use of said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion on this one? Roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Now go to agenda item number 21. Resolution involving vacation and execution of a memorandum of agreement.
A resolution approving a memorandum of agreement negotiated between the City of Hamilton, Ohio and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 38 Rank and File Unit regarding vacation and ratifying the execution of said memorandum of agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Pullman. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Good to agenda item number 22. Resolution involving an appropriation.
A resolution declaring the intent of the City of Hamilton to appropriate a permanent easement and temporary easement in certain real estate located at 2951 Tyler'sville Road, Hamilton, Ohio. Jerry W. Collins, property owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments or questions from council? Roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We go to agenda item number 23. Also a resolution involving an appropriation.
A resolution declaring the intent of the City of Hamilton to appropriate permanent and temporary easements in fee simple interest in certain real estate located at 2921 Tyler'sville Road, Hamilton, Ohio for the public interest of Tyler'sville Road construction project. Joanne M. and Daniel L. Schellenbach, property owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Lauer. Discussion, comment? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Go to agenda item number 24. Resolution also involving an appropriation.
A resolution declaring the intent of the City of Hamilton to appropriate a standard highway easement and three temporary easements in certain real estate located at 2881 Tyler'sville Road, Hamilton, Ohio. West Rentals Incorporated, property owner.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Already did agenda item number 25. We go to agenda item number 26.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver all an electric vehicle charging station host lease agreement with the Hamilton Community Foundation for the installation of an electric vehicle charging station at the Fitton Center for Creative Arts.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion or comment on this one? We've got a first, we've got a second. And I know a lot of folks in this town are glad that we're doing this. I'm sure a lot of our visitors are glad that we're doing this as well. So we've got a first and a second, no discussion. Roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Now go to audience, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. My report tonight is going to be relatively short. I want to recognize two employees. By the time we have our next council meeting, will no longer be employed by the City of Hamilton. One of them is with us tonight, Nate Perry. The other one is Jacob Stone. And I was thinking about what I was going to say about them tonight. I was looking at the city's, what we, most people call them your core values. I like to think of them as aspirational values, that you never really reach the values, but you're always aspired to get there. And two of them in particular, one of them is passion for Hamilton and the other one is own the outcome. And I'll start with Jacob Stone, who's not with us tonight. But I told Jacob recently, I said, you know, you're a five-tool player. And I think he was offended. He's apparently not a baseball fan. I told him that was a good thing to be known as a five-tool player. It means that you're very good, no matter what you do, you excel. And the one thing about Jacob that I've always appreciated, especially with the value passion for Hamilton, is nights, weekends, holidays. Jacob Stone was volunteering at events. He was behind the scenes, making sure the events were going well. He was handling the marketing, the social media aspects of things. He was always going above and beyond what his job description was. So when I think about any progress Hamilton's made in the past decade, you could literally point to city employees that were there doing that work. And Jacob certainly was a star. So for those of you that may not be aware, he is taking a job with the Hamilton Community Foundation. He'll be on their executive team and on the development side. I'm not exactly sure his last date, but I know that in April he'll be with the foundation. Nate Perry, who is with us tonight. I'm going to throw in the value also of innovation. I know that everyone generally had an idea what Nate did on the business service side for our utilities. But when you think about the financial sophistication necessary to do things like lock in long-term natural gas prices. So as crazy as it sounds, but when the war in Ukraine started and gas prices literally escalated in almost every community across the world, ours stayed stable because Nate and his team had the foresight to lock in long-term and kept our rates incredibly stable. In some cases, even in this region, two to three times less than what people were paying for the same amount of gas. The work that Nate did with the credit rating agencies, again, it sounds like something that, well, what's the big deal about that? Well, the big deal is since we own and operate all utilities in Hamilton, by making sure that we had a solid credit rating in water, wastewater, gas, and electric, it kept our borrowing prices, our cost of capital lower, which was a direct translation. And because if our credit rating had dropped, our residents and our businesses would be paying more on the utility side. I mean, I could go on and on, but like the long-range power supply forecasting that's necessary. Again, a very sophisticated modeling that has to take place. Something that we used to spend over a quarter million dollars annually outsourcing because of the sophistication of that, he was doing in-house at a much lower cost. Again, which was a direct savings to us. Nate also is joining the executive team. He's going to be working in Columbus at American Municipal Power. Got a great position there. Very sad to see both Jacob and Nate go. But very proud to call them coworkers for the past, both of them for the past decade and wish them nothing but the best. Thank you, Nate.
We could all say great things about those two guys. They understood what it was like to be a public servant. They got it. They worked for you citizens. They worked for us. Never saw either one of them, you know, very upset or mad about their job. They just had a positive, positive attitude about things. But they understood public service, they got it, and they succeeded for our city. Anyone else on council want to say anything about Jacob or Nathan? I think, you know, city members did the best.
Mr. Mayor, just yet. One of the opportunities that we look to in Joshua and his leadership team is to ensure that the team members that work with the city are all rising stars. All have the opportunity to excel, all have the opportunity to move on in their career paths, to work in different areas of the city. But in this case, these two gentlemen that you've heard so much about tonight are moving away from the city because they have been rising stars, because they've offered resources to our city and brought opportunities, which you just heard, cost-effective savings to our residents, cost-effective savings to our city. And then the opportunities that they have professionally, and I've had the opportunity to share with both of these gentlemen, as the mayor said and Joshua said, who have worked for our city for over a decade, and congratulate them personally to be able to move along in their career paths as young men and be able to excel in those new roles, to always know that they're welcome here in our city and to be part of the fabric of our city. I'm sure they will come back and will share the new opportunities that they're taking under their belts. But again, congratulations, Nate, congratulations, Jacob, thanks for all your work.
And the ultimate city manager? Audience of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I want to shout out to Brad Baker in Pinball Garage. Monday night, they hosted an event for Inspiration Studios, also known as Inside Out Studios, previous name. And Brad Baker, in his normal fashion, opened up his Pinball Garage to host the event. And they also gave all the tips to Inside Out Inspiration Studios, I should say. That was, Brad's always reaching, you know, doing things for the community. And again, he should be recognized. And I know he will probably say, oh, you know, don't worry about it, you know, that's just the way Brad is. And the other business I want to shout out to is Inspiration Studios because what they do in this community is real close to my heart, my son has special needs. And I got to see him paint this time, and I never knew the boy could paint. Because I try to give him a paintbrush to paint a wall or something he runs. But he does, he did a great job. He had fun doing it. I got to see the artist, what they did. And it was a good event. It turned out really well, and I hope they made a lot of money. So, and appreciate everybody in Hamilton that came out and supported them. And it was a nice event, and I think they may be doing it again next year. So I invite everybody to come out. so I invite everybody to come out.
Week before, they had an event at Casual Pint.
Right.
So that worked out really well, and I want to thank Anne Marie at Casual Pint, as well as, of course, Brad Baker at Pinball Garage.
All these businesses step up, and it's really nice, so it's awesome.
Mayor, I had a couple of things. Please, I, I wanted to recognize the folks at Vinyl Max had to leave, they were going to another meeting, but, um, when the city, and a partner in our city, such as Vinyl Max, and many of the other businesses that have been before us, uh, with the opportunity to expand the one hundred and fifty thousand square foot expansion, uh, that Vinyl Max has said, we want to stay in Hamilton, we want to be able to employ team members here in Hamilton that can come to work and go back home, that reside in our community and, and things, and add value. So as the mayor said, uh, an expansion like that is extraordinary, more cars in the parking lot, more people working, uh, working three shifts a day, and, and things, that really, really adds value to what we're doing here in the city. So thank you to all the team members who work with the people from Vinyl Max, Pat mentioned the planning commission, but importantly, all of you who are in the audience with us tonight, uh, the, the residents that work with Vinyl Max, thank you for doing so, thank you for making that investment in our city. Uh, last week, I had the opportunity on Thursday to have lunch with, uh, the seventeen-strong sophomores, uh, tenth graders at Hamilton High School. Uh, we had fourteen members from the different communities that you students heard about tonight, uh, that are representing their neighborhoods and wished to carry forward the seventeen-strong initiative that, uh, Ty Smallwood had started at the ninth grade high school last year. Those ninth graders will be moving over to become tenth graders, will continue the initiative that they're in this year in their tenth grade. Our tenth graders that I visited with last week will carry that into their third year, into their sophomore, or, or junior year. So importantly, the initiative you heard about tonight, recognizing our seventeen neighborhoods, we believe strongly that the student activities, student youth of our community that are looking to go on to school, go into the trades, whatever they may do, we want you to be able to live here, work here, play here, enjoy the city, and make this your home. Sure, there are opportunities to take you elsewhere in the country, take you elsewhere in the world, and, and we want you to experience those things, but always know that Hamilton is home, and part of that sense of place, part of that seventeen communities that are so strong, seventeen strong neighborhoods in our, in our city are, are where you guys live, where you're going to school, and where you're making perhaps jobs right now. So please know that this is all important to us, and that's why, again, we'll have these monthly meetings at your high school. Uh, Councilman Lauer has monthly meetings at the, at the ninth grade school, and then